Dan, are we still waiting on people?
Um, I don't see Sharon. I think everyone else is here.
Uh.
Sharon will not be here.
Sure. Sharon will not be here?
Right.
Okay. I guess we are all here. And wait for the clock to hit seven. I think we're right about there.
We're at seven.
Okay. Well, uh, why don't we call the meeting to order? We'll call this meeting of the Branford Plannings. Is the tape on?
Yes, it is.
Okay. We'll call this meeting of the Branford Planning Zoning Commission to Order. It is Thursday, May 1st, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Uh, for this meeting of the Branford Planning Zoning Commission, I will introduce members of the commission and staff. Commission Member Joe Chadwick, are you here?
Joe Chadwick is present.
Thank you, Joe. Fred Russo, Fred, are you here?
Fred is here.
Thank you, Fred. Joe Vauso, Joe, are you here?
Joe Vauso here.
Thank you, Joe. Marcy Pelusi, are you here?
Marcy's here.
Massimola Gori, Massimo, you here?
Massimo Legore is here.
And Dave Dyer, Dave, are you here? I think I see you muted. Uh, I see your name up there, but.
You do?
I'm sorry. Dave Dyer is here.
Thank you, Dave. And, uh, our staff this evening is our Town Planner, McKeel Walkers. McKeel, you're here?
I'm here.
Our assistant, uh, helping us out, still planning consultant, John Guskowski. John, are you here?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Our zoning enforcement officer, Jane Ellis. Jane, are you here?
Yes, I am.
And our clerk recording secretary, Michelle Martin, is also with us. My name is Chuck Andrews. I am chair. And, uh, I think we would normally start with reading the notice of public hearing, but I don't know if we have any or if we're just continuing them.
We have any public notices to read, to be read.
Okay, so we have no public notices to read. I think we're just continuing public hearings that we have previously opened. So with that, uh, we'll follow our normal format for public hearings, which is the applicant goes first, makes his presentation, including any comments from consultants. After the applicant goes, we turn it over to the commission and staff. We often hear staff reports, questions, comments from commissions. At that point, we'll open it up to the public. I'll ask Jane to go through to, uh, recite how the, remind people how the public can participate. After the public portion, we allow the applicant to respond to any of the public comments. We may or may not close the public hearing. And it's certainly not unusual to continue public hearings over, uh, more than one meeting. Uh, Jane, you want to review with, uh, the applicants in public, the process for participating in the public hearing?
Absolutely. So this is how we participate in a Zoom meeting. Only if your computer has a microphone, two-way communication, then during a public hearing, if you wish to speak, hit the raise hand in the participant window at the bottom of the screen. If you do not have a microphone, you will need to call in on the phone to speak. You press star nine and then raise your hand. The information for how to dial is on the agenda. During a public hearing, if you do not wish to speak, you may type your comments into the chat feature. And you will, we will do our best to take a look at the chat, but obviously we prefer that you raise your hand and speak. It's much easier for us to see. Those joining using a computer and Zoom software should note that typing in your full name to view the meeting only and not speak is not required. A pseudonym may be used. Again, though, if you wish to speak, you need to give your name according to the Public Act 22-3. All instructions are on the agenda. If you require more information, thank you.
Uh, Chuck Anders, Chair, we're also supposed to state our stake, state our name before we speak because some people may be listening by phone and that's helpful, so. Um, so thank you, Jane. So with that, we'll, we'll start our public hearing items, continuing situations of public hearings. Item number one is Kim McCabe and Charles Watts, applicant owners, 38 Howard Avenue. And I understand we received a request to continue this, this public hearing matter to our second meeting in June. Uh, the letter states that there is a, I guess, a mediation scheduled, uh, on June 11th. Uh, so perhaps that might narrow some of the issues, uh. So, um, does the, uh, I do see Ms. Shansky here below, she'll probably hear on a later application, but that is, um, uh, Ms. Shansky, that's correct? Did I get that right?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. That was correct.
Okay. So for this item, uh, unless commission members have any other comments, uh, we will continue this matter. Uh, so if you're here on that one, if you're here on item number one, that's 38 Howard Avenue. We're going to continue this matter to our second meeting in June, which is June 19th. Um, and, uh, so, uh, have some comments on that, then we'll, uh, hear you on that time. So with that one, uh, we'll move now to items number two and three. This is the Mariners Landing LLC, 5254, 5658, and 60 Maple Street. This is the special exception for the approved residential development with mixed use and the site plan modification coastal my, a site plan. Uh, this was a public hearing that we opened and I believe we continued. There were a couple of issues that came up that we wanted some further information about. And, uh, uh, I think one was regarding a coverage question and then another regarding, uh, uh, Marina use, the slips on the site and how that affects parking and so forth. So, uh, Ms. Shansky, are you ready to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Attorney Marjorie Shansky. I represent Mariners Landing LLC. I'm here this evening with John Mancini from BL Companies. Uh, Robert Sacks, the principal of the LLC is likely logging on, um, momentarily. And we are here indeed, uh, to continue what we started last week with the commission. Uh, we have these two applications. Uh, they are primarily site plan modifications, uh, of which there are 24, one of which triggered the special permit that was also filed. Um, we came to the commission with the endorsement of the Town Center Revitalization Review Board on all of the modifications. And perhaps the town planner will comment further on that as he was at that meeting. Um, the special permit, as you recall, is to reconfigure the public access green space adjacent to building D, now known, I think, as 52 Maple Street, in order to provide a few more public access spaces adjacent to the area on the site where the bulk of the public access amenities converge, including the kayak launch. We requested that we provide specific information about the calculation of impervious cover in light of the proposed changes and we submitted, I think it was yesterday, uh, an exhibit prepared by BL and the supporting data that came from, um, AutoCAD, uh, relating to the calculation. And Mr. Mancini from BL is here to discuss that request and the responses with you, and perhaps we should do that first.
Thank you, Ms. Shansky. Mr. Mancini?
Okay, uh, good evening, Chuck, members of the commission. Um, Marjorie, thank you. Um, so Chuck, when we started this work, we were given a electronic base map of the property, um, that was provided to us by, uh, Robert Sachs's in-house attorney guy. And John Schmitz walked the property and viewed that drawing, uh, which was, uh, a lot of surveyed material of what was being built at the time. And we compared it to the diagram that was approved by your commission. The, um, commission, uh, questioned whether or not, how we can add a few more spaces and then the, the coverage not change. The bottom line is, is the plan that was done before, um, Marjorie can share it, but what we did is instead of telling you, we didn't get that information by just like looking at the plan. They said 60%, they must around it. I don't really know why, but, but we do it in CAD. And all the areas, that drawing looks like the one we did for our current plan. And when you add all those areas up, the percentage of impervious coverage was 97.2%. Now remember, there were parking spaces along the access, uh, the easement along the right. There was a few, there was another public access walk there. There were, there are some minor changes, but we don't know why it was called 60%, but the way we calculated it was the same way we're doing our current plan that you have, which is in AutoCAD with all of the, uh, we don't just list the line, we actually put a hatch into the area and listed. So we're very confident that A, what's being represented on the drawings is very close to what's out there right now. And B, that the value that we've given you in that exhibit is correct.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank, thank you, Mr. Mancini. Any commission members have any questions for Mr. Mancini? Okay, we appreciate that. That was just, it's just interesting that a prior engineer said it was at 60 and, but it sounds like you've done a thorough review and, uh, you're confident in your numbers. Okay, Ms. Shansky, you want to continue?
I will. Thank you. So the second issue relates to the public access elements in specifically the dock and the boat slips and I guess some operational details. And, uh, as I wrote in the written response that was submitted, and as I said last week, the slips that are accessory to Mariners Landing and that comprise a significant element of public access will be managed by Mar- Mariners Landing LLC, which maintains and will continue to maintain an office at building B, which is, I think, 56 Maple Street. And they will manage the operation of the marina, um, going forward. Uh, there was an, um, Ms. Nicoletti who, uh, had some questions about that management. She spoke to the commission at last week and she also contacted me, uh, this week and I called her back and discussed, uh, her questions with her and assured her that, um, there would be conscientious management and that this is a residential community that seeks to preserve that ethos, uh, among the, uh, various users of both the private and public elements. Now, uh, in my note to the commission, I corrected the slip count, which I stated erroneously last week, for which I apologize. There are 13 plus three slips. Uh, the, um, three are transient spaces that deep, um, required in connection with the approval of the kayak launch. And they extend, I'm going to say, to the left from the kayak launch, uh, from the existing dock. And then there are 13 slips going the other way, which are, um, designated five for public access and eight for Mariners Landing. Um, the, uh, transient slips are, uh, free to the public and are envisioned to be uh, used by people who may come to dock and then, um, take advantage of the walkway at Mariners Landing or walk into town and do whatever. Um, so they are truly available to, some for served, uh, to transient boats. And then the five public access, uh, that are designated public access, uh, are rental. And they require five parking spaces, which are present among the 245 spaces that were previously approved and that comprise, um, Mariners Landing. And we went out and conducted a specific parking space survey, uh, to verify the number that are on site. And it is the 245 that were the approved number by the commission. Um, the moorings have been associated with the riparian rights of Mariners Landing property literally forever. But they were used for a period of time by the adjacent lot club, yacht club, and that use terminated in 2021. And the slips and floats have been restored to function by Mariners Landing. They're fully permitted by deep. And, uh, that's the information I have for you, Mr. Chairman, and you may have other questions.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Ms. Shansky. My, my question, it, it sounds like a great, you know, public, contributing to public access component, sounds like three of them are, uh, that you mentioned and, uh, are good and it helps with the kayak. Uh, it sounds like good things. It was, I, my, my questions were more technical. I just don't remember. You described this as a marina. I don't remember approving this as a marina, um, you know, in the, in the 2020s. So I'm wondering, is this a change of use? I mean, that's not, not that I don't like it, but I just don't ever remember this being included in the description, even though it may be part of the use. And, and the way you described it, it sounds like some of the slips would be, you know, accessory to the dwellings. Uh, others are, you know, have the, fulfill the public access component, all that good things, but, but that was sort of the technical thing. Have we, did we, it does just come within the approved use? And maybe part of it is, well, it's beyond your jurisdiction because it is actually in the, in the water and that's exclusive deep. I get that. But I, I didn't, there's a landwork component, particularly the parking. And, and you said that there are five within the 245, but did the 245 include the marina? Cause kind of the first time I'm here, that, that was sort of my question. And then the, the related was, I mean, this is an addition of parking that you want to do. So I was saying, okay, well, maybe part of that, what, the added parking you want to add here was to accommodate that. I just, I wasn't clear this because you kind of threw me that. Those were my questions at least. So, um, yeah.
Pardon me. I didn't mean to step on you. I understand. And, and I want to first emphasize that the manner in which deep looks at this is that it's 50/50 public access and, um, and Mariners Landing access. And, and while the Mariners Landing slips are for people who live at Mariners Landing, there is some interpretation that their members of the public do, um, because they're certainly not owners. Um, but in any case, it's from deep's perspective of 50/50 split. Uh, with respect to the, um, convergent or the, the fact that we have, um, sort of conveniently or auspiciously or by coincidence, uh, come here looking for some additional parking spaces, had nothing to do specifically with the appearance of the, uh, the restoration of the slips. It had to do with and has to do with trying to get parking at the area most convenient, most conducive for the public to access the water uses, which I suppose includes the slips, but also includes that kayak launch for people who just come down for the day with their kayak and, and want to get into the river. So, um, beyond that, uh, on the, um, Schedule A of the, um, addendum or of the PDD that, uh, is approved, it is a use permitted in the Anchor Reef PDD, including Mariners Landing. It is listed as item P10 with a reference to section 4.8D of the regulations. And, um, I, I would suggest that it's certainly not a change of use, uh, but it is, it appears as a, um, a personification, which is not the right word, but a, a demonstration of the robustness of the public access engagement that is, uh, part of what deep really wanted for this site.
Thank you, Ms. Shansky. My, my understanding was that Marina was included as a possible use when we did the use table. But I didn't know if the, because you're sort of based off the master plan, I don't remember it ever being referenced, uh, before. So, and, and it sounds like it is new. It sounds like the dock is, so.
Well, as I said, the moorings were around since at least the eighties. Um, so we don't think of it as new. We do think of it restoration.
Right, right. And I guess your guys have taken it over from Indian Death, right?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Because it was, it belonged to Mariners and Mariners predecessors.
Okay, uh, yes, uh, um, it, it's, someone's raising, is, is he with Mr. Carlson with your team?
Yeah, yes. Uh, thank you. I'm Steve Carlson. I, I don't know if it's appropriate for members of the public just to ask a question now or?
No, it isn't. I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
That's quite all right. No, no, I didn't know if the, if you had finished on that, so I'll.
No, 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 what, what we'll do.
I will have a question about this. Thank you.
Great, great. We'll, we'll get to you in a moment, Mr. Carlson. I, I, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Let, let's turn it over to commission members and staff. Uh, are there questions, comments from commission members and staff? First, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Uh, Walkers and, uh, staff, if there are any additions to the staff report. Oh, one thing I forgot to ask is if Attorney Shansky is, there were a couple of additional things. There was a deep letter that came in, Ms. Shansky. And I think they suggested, uh, as a, that, that you modify the flood management plan to, to address how you'll, the, the, the portable stuff that are in the flood zone, how that would be, uh, removed in the event of a flood. Um, I don't know if you saw that and if that would be okay as a condition for you.
I did see it, Mr. Chair. This is Marjorie Shansky. I did see it, Mr. Chairman, and I did look again at, uh, the PDB, which includes an emergency evacuation plan, which is directed at the eventuality of flood. In fact, the emergency evacuation plan in its original, uh, incarnation exists, um, vis a vis actually Anchor Reef, when the total landmass was part of its, um, planned community. We provided in connection with the plan development, a, um, an addendum to the emergency evacuation plan. And I'm perfectly, uh, my client is perfectly happy to amend that document to reflect the concern expressed by deep.
Great. And what about the Town Center Review? I thought they had a couple of comments, but, but I don't know, maybe Mr. Walkers, but, but were you okay with what they suggested?
Yes, they, they suggest, one of the ones that I remember, and I apologize, maybe I'm not going to remember all of them, but there were just a couple. One is to, for this new sort of driveway that facilitates access for operation and maintenance and emergency around the site. They wanted it to be si- some signage to say no through traffic. We're happy to do that. And, um, Mr. Walkers, I, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering anything else in the moment.
Yeah. Yeah. So one other condition that they recommended was the screening of the dumpsters with likely landscaping. Uh, but they all also had a favorable recommendation to the commission about the proposed, uh, parking lot configuration that's before you tonight. Um, I think the original submit submission was a larger parking lot and this one to, tonight is a smaller version that the Town Center, um, Review Board was in favor of.
If, if I may, thank you very much, Mr. Walkers. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Marjorie Shansky. Uh, my client advised me today that shrubs or that maybe trees, and I will be happy to supply the type, have been planted on three sides of the dumpster, uh, locations, uh, this week. So we've already complied with the buffering request.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Shansky. Um, Mr. Walkers or Mr. Guskowski, any, any comments, uh, first? And then we'll ask if commission members have any comments before we open up the public.
I'll let, I'll let McKeel speak first. He had the most recent.
Yeah. No, uh, I think, uh, John can, uh, review the, the five conditions that he had. I think one of them is, you know, it's part of the presentation tonight. I can read them out, John, if you don't have it in front of you.
Okay, I, I was just about to go, go digging for it. Yeah, if you want.
Okay, I have it then. So the, the five conditions are that all conditions in previous approvals should remain in force and effect that may still apply. Uh, the can, second is the commission approves a special permit per the proposed addition of 41 parking spaces. Um, demonstrate on site plans sheet C1.00, provide, prepared by BL Companies. Uh, condition three is proposed parking spaces add by this special exception, site plan mod, which will be appropriately labeled and identified as public parking. And condition number four is site plan be updated to include the revised calculations of impervious surface ratio reflected by the commission's choice of parking layout. And condition five, site plan modifications be made based on staff comments, including details, provide for signage, lighting and lighting changes.
So, go ahead, John. Yeah, so, uh, John Guskowski, consulting planner. Um, yeah, so of, of those, um, certainly one would remain. Um, the two, um, was, the two being the, the parking changes is, is sort of one of the fundamental questions still, still, um, in the, in the commission's hands. Um, and actually since the writing of that, there were, there were two, there were two options. Um, you know, I feel like a 55 parking spot version and a 40, 41 parking spot version. Um, and I believe we're going with the 41 is being the, the proposed one. Um, uh, is, is still up, you know, to, to be decided and settled. Um, the parking spaces, uh, labeled, I think, is, you know, is an appropriate condition, uh, going forward, because certainly any, any additional public parking should be appropriately labeled. Um, and their signage plan indicates that. Um, we heard this evening, the revised calculation about the appropriate surface ratio. Um, and then site man modifications, um, including details for signage and lighting that was provided, I believe, in advance of the Town Center, um, Review Board, uh, last week, last week, Wednesday. So, um, several of the comments have already been addressed and, um, I think we are, you know, in good shape to move forward on the others.
Right. And, and John, I think one of, there was a, the deep comment that the flood, I think, uh, Ms. Uh, Shansky indicated she'd be willing to have that as a condition, that the flood management plan be amended to address concerns of the deep letter of April 23rd, 2025, if we could add that.
Sure.
And, and then I don't know about it, it, was there anything left of the Town Center Review Board that the, um, I think, uh, it was, sounds like the shrubbery made, that, that was one around the dumpsters. Sounds like that may have been already accomplished. But, um, and I'm not sure what the other one was, was just, um.
Did they know through traffic on the access road?
Okay, yeah. And, and if we need to, we include that as well. Um, okay. So, um, with that, how about, let's remember questions, comments from commission members before we open up to the public?
Joe Vauso, I have a question.
Joe?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, curious, uh, when it came to the, the, the boat slips, are there three, uh, I, I think you said three slips that are going to be, uh, open to the public as public use? Is that correct?
There are three transient spaces. This is Marjorie Shansky.
Yeah, well, I, I'm sure it's being done. I just suggested that, that just, that, that's what they are, transient and give them hours of oper- whatever. That we don't have somebody there thinking it's, it's a, it's a boat slip for them to use for, uh, long term. So, I mean, just have some kind of good signage there. I would suggest, uh, of hours of operations, hours that you can actually park there.
Agreed.
That's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Other questions, comments from commission members?
Chuck, Fred Russo, go ahead, Chuck. I'm sorry, no, Joe, let Joe go ahead. He's, he got him before me.
No, I, 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 okay, thanks. Um, this is, this is fairly minor, but is there interior space to secure the exterior movable furniture? Um, and the charcoal grill and things like that? In the event of a bad weather event, um, will things like that just be chained up or will they actually be moved inside? And, and my question is mostly just, you know, debris and misses.
Uh, that's a legitimate question to which I don't readily have an answer. Uh, yes, there are interior sort of storage spaces that are associated with Mariners Landing. Uh, that's a legitimate question to which I don't readily have an answer. Uh, yes, there are interior sort of storage spaces that are associated with Mariners Landing, and I will try to, while you text my client and see if I can elicit a specific answer from him.
Hi. Thank you, Ms. Shansky. And I and I think what the condition about complying with the deep letter, because that's exactly what they said, Joe, is that you should either do one of those things. So I think that those are the options probably. So either secure it inside or or get them secured, so. Um, Fred.
Yeah, Fred Russo, yeah. I I just want to reiterate what I I I said last meeting is that, you know, anything that um this applicant can do to enhance public access, which might include a couple more parking spaces, I think is a good thing. Uh, you know, there's only one river and there's not a lot of access to it, quite honestly. And the fact that there, the applicant's willing to open up even three spaces for transit uh traffic, I think it's a wonderful idea. So I I I it makes me feel better to hear uh Attorney Shansky uh reiterate on her part again with the purpose of of what they're doing. I, you know, it's not mandatory, but I think if they've taken that approach, I think it's a good sign. So thank you.
Chuck Kinnis here. Thank you, Fred. Any further questions, comments from any commission members before we open up the public?
Um, yeah, Chuck, Massimo Legori.
Massimo.
Yes, um, I know Marcy had a great idea um last meeting. She had mentioned something about that open space, um, that open grass area space there um being a dog park. Um, two things. Um, I was wondering if it does become a dog park, and um I don't know if that ever got put in consideration by by the owners here over at Mariners, but um if it does become a dog park, um would they have to come back for any type of approvals, or is that something we could do here uh for future reference um for that area? I think it's a great area. And and would it be also open to the public if it does become a dog park?
Um, Ms. Shansky, do you want to give your thoughts to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Marjorie Shansky. Um, it as a dog owner and dog lover, I actually don't use a dog park, and there's nothing about that space that can't be perambulated on by people and their dogs, even without a fenced-in situation. So um so that's just to say, it doesn't on some level, it doesn't matter whether it's a dog park or not, except for not being able to leave your dog off lead, and I'm in favor of not leaving your dog off feed, so. Um, but if there were an interest in making a dog park, my understanding from prior experience on other developments is that we would be back for a site plan modification for that, because it would be a fenced-in area, and that doesn't currently exist. So there may be some sort of waste receptacle that is convenient to that space. Um. Uh, and um, uh, there may be, you know, they may have a a an attachment that dispenses with bags to keep the area clean. But it is not here proposed as a dog park. I appreciate the suggestion. I understand people's interest in that. But there's nothing in its natural state that precludes people in people enjoying it with their dogs.
If I may supplement that, excuse me, I was there this past weekend, and there is in fact a um dispenser for bags, and there is a waste receptacle. And I found that just completely refreshing.
Yeah.
Uh, Chuck Kinnis here. Thank, thank, thank you, Massimo, Joe, Ms. Shansky. Are there other questions, comments from uh commission members or staff before we open up the public?
Uh, yeah, Marcy Paluzzi here. Um, very simple, and I think I just didn't hear it come up. Are the dumpsters also fenced in as well as um hidden with shrubs?
I believe, but I, maybe Mr. Mancini can take a look at that. And I don't have a site plan in front of me.
Attorney Shansky, I can sort of jump in. When you presented to and presented to the commission last week, uh, they are not fenced in. Um, the town center revitalization review board actually did not prefer to have it fenced in. They would like a softer greeting uh screening as a result. Um, but those are the recycling dumpsters. So we talked at length about that they're not for trash last, the last meeting. Um, so that might help spread everyone's memory about that conversation.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I, it's just sort of a townwide um procedure thing, because I just, you know, I've always seen details with like a stockade fence around, not that the shrubs aren't good in addition to it, but um maybe I'm not understanding the size of the dumpsters or, you know, not seeing where they're located, but if that's what the town center review board prefers, I assume it's fine.
Chuck Kinnis here. Thank, thank you, Marcy. Mr. Mancini, did you want to add anything?
Uh, yeah, so they're definitely not enclosed right now, and and like Marjorie said, if they're not garbage, they're recycling, and they are the smaller, um, I don't know, four to six yard um uh containers. So they're really not that hard to screen with landscaping. Um, they're on a concrete slab, um, and um they're spread out around the site, mostly in the corner parking.
Mr. Chairman, I beg your pardon, Marjorie Shansky, I have an answer uh that the uh chairs will be taken inside the garage and that the grills are in permanent structures, and the garages in the buildings are no longer in the flood plain. So I think we have uh a secure means of dealing with that and happy to include that expression in the addendum to the emergency evacuation plan.
Chuck Kinnis here. Thank you, Ms. Shansky. Anything else from commission members or staff before we open up to the public? Hearing none, then let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Does any member of the public wish to speak? Looks like I see it's, the name is Kathy Carlson. Uh, Jane, you.
Okay, thank, thank you. If uh if I can speak, it's Steve Carlson. Kathy is my wife. Uh, I live in Sylvan Point, which is right across the river from uh the Mariners Landing. We've lived here twelve years, and we're one of the eighty-six units here in Sylvan Point. Um, my question is just to follow up in part to what Mr. Vayuso was asking about, and it concerns the uh, the uh, the dock and Marina and so forth, which, by the way, is very nice looking so far, and uh is as everything else. Uh, it was over there yesterday. Um. My questions are just two. With respect to the five public rental slips, am I correct to assume that that means that they're a seasonal rental or a longer-term rental a month or all summer? Is that what's intended for those?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And then following up on the transient ones, is the expectation, just to follow up on what Mr. Vayuso was saying, is the notion that people would not be able to tie up overnight, that it's simply a a day use?
Yes.
Okay, and uh, all right, because generally, I would say, having lived here, the people on slips up and down the river are really quite respectful of their neighbors, and I don't recall any issues. And uh so I don't think anyone has any questions concerning either the Mariners Landing uh rentals, or also the those for the public, those five, so those thirteen. Strictly the three transient ones, but it sounds like you have a plan. And uh if people get rambunctious or out of line, you have someone uh someone on site who, and I assume you'll probably post a sign that will say something else about no uh excessive noise or something to that effect.
There will be appropriate signage, including no overnight docking.
Right. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment? Uh, we have one, Tracy Everson.
Hi, thank you. I'm trying to manipulate my Zoom here so you could see me too. There we go. Sorry about that. Um, I'm Tracy Everson. I'm a Branford Town representative uh here in District Five where this uh this development is. Um, I I apologize if this has been asked and answered. I'm just joining uh the discussion here tonight. Uh, is there a reason why a four, you know, these additional parking spaces are being asked for that were not part of the original plan, given that this is a transit-oriented development? Um, and in our TOD uh to designed to really get people out of their cars, not in their cars? So um I'm not sure if that's an appropriate question to be asking on this meeting, but um, you know, if if more impervious services are going down there right now, I realize not all the buildings are occupied, but there seem to be plenty of parking spaces there, and we certainly have a ton of empty parking spaces at the train station, which is a short walk away.
Thank you, Ms. Everson. We'll ask the applicant to address that. Are there other questions you have uh besides that?
No, that was my question.
Okay. Um, Ms. Shansky, you want to, I I mean, that that's, I you you have covered, that's, you know, why are we doing this? That's, it's a basic question. Uh, so our elected representative, I I know it may be a little bit redundant, but perhaps you could highlight some some responses or a response to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Attorney Marjorie Shansky, and yes, I think that has been frankly, a robust uh element in both last Thursday and and maybe not so much yet tonight, but uh, the the core for the request to locate parking spaces where requests has to do with the uh end of the or beginning, depending on your perspective, of the public access walking trail. The kayak launch, and particularly for people who are not using the kayak rack to store their kayaks, but come fresh of a day with the kayak or canoe, I don't know if canoes work this way, but um on the top of their car, and they are have an ease to be able to offload and get to the kayak launch and enjoy the access to the river. And I would say that uh thanks to Mr. Guskowski's thorough staff report, he even notices in the TOD plan of the um city and certainly of the town rather, and certainly from Deep's perspective, the success and and encouragement of access to the waterfront is to enable people who are not local and who are not arriving on the shoreline railroad uh to get to the place where they can then interface with the waterfront. I I am aware of the um the ardor of DEEP to make the waterfront truly accessible, and while they are appreciative of the elements of our public access plan, this requested additional parking is an element associated with that to ensure its success and ensure its use by the greatest number of people. So that's why.
And we 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 also were diligent to ensure that they stayed within the standard, which is the sixty percent, and and received testimony from their experts tonight of of how that was calculated and to ensure that uh they were in conformance with that. Um, are there any other questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, then I think we can close the public portion of this matter, and um are there further comments from the applicant, commission members or staff? Uh, Ms. Shansky, any additional comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing further.
Okay, uh, commission, uh, our our commission members and staff, any further comments? And if not, we can close this matter. I assume we can take it up in a bit, but any further comments by anyone? Hearing none, then we'll close this matter as a public hearing, and again, I think we can take this up in a in a little bit. So so thank you, Ms. Shansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commission.
Okay, so that's uh that's it for our public hearings. Um, so with that, we may as well take these up. Um, John, I don't know if you're able to pull up your staff report and so we can look at the proposed findings and conditions.
Uh, so hopefully people can see that. I've I've forwarded to page nine uh with the draft conditions. I've also tentatively added um six and seven based on uh McKeel's uh thoughts about about adding a couple of conditions.
Okay, and what was the finding? Can you pull that up? I know it's probably on the previous page, because it's, you know, compliance with CAM is going to be something like that, right? Okay, so three findings uh that they are among in compliance with nine six F and um and also in compliance with the coastal site plan review process in nine point seven of the Coastal Area Management Act. And uh that's subject to conditions that it meets the criteria, the regulations essentially uh for the.
Mr. Chair, if I if I might, John Guskowski, um, again, these these findings were um drafted in advance of the revised signage and lighting scheme that the applicant, so the part highlighted, the second clause of finding number one, I think could probably be deleted.
Okay.
As a, if if you're going to be reading these as part of a formal motion.
Right, okay. So so the highlighted point, we would delete that. Um, okay.
And I'm happy to do that if you want.
Right, okay. Can you, can can you do it right now? Cool, all right. We love it. Okay, so so those are the findings, and then just run through the conditions again. They, I I I know we read them once during the public hearing, and then uh if they're short enough, maybe you can just run through them quickly again.
So, uh, John Guskowski, uh, draft conditions, condition number one, all conditions of previous approvals shall remain in full force and effect as they may still apply. Two, commission approves a special permit per the addition, proposed addition of forty-one parking spaces demonstrated on site plan sheet C uh C one dot zero zero, prepared by BL companies entitled Mariners Landing Phase Four Parking Lot Modification, Fifty-Six Maple Street, Branford, Connecticut, with the latest revision date of four sixteen twenty-four. Um, and and that I would look to Attorney Shansky just to make sure that that is the correct date reference, especially given the revisions that were made. Um, condition number three.
I I know we closed the hearing, but I'm going to open reopen it quickly to see if that's correct. Ms. Shansky, can you hear us? It's a technical thing. Does that sound right?
Mr. Guskowski is referring to the date on the revised plan?
Uh, correct, the one with the the revised parking arrangement.
Um, I will uh confirm, and what did you say, John? I'm so sorry.
Uh, April sixteenth, four sixteen twenty-four. I'm sure that should be twenty-five.
April sixteen twenty twenty-five. I'm going to check it, and I'll send you a a thumbs up or a yes in the chat momentarily.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, so moving back to conditions, condition number three, proposed parking spaces added by this special exception and site plan modification shall be appropriately labeled and identified as public parking or site plan to be updated to include revised calculation of impervious surface ratio reflecting commission's choice of parking layout. Uh, and Mr. Chairman, I think that probably could be eliminated.
Okay.
Uh. And so the next, which would be new number four, site plan modifications based on staff comments, including be made based on staff comments, including light details provided for signage and lighting changes, uh, which already has been uh made. Um, flood management plan shall be updated to reflect the comments from Connecticut DEEP in the letter dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. And finally, and and McKeel may want to weigh in on this wording, I, there shall be no through traffic in the proposed access roadway. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right.
Yeah, John, it's McKeel Whackers. I mean, that is the the intention. Um, the commission more wants signage to 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 state that fact.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, are are there questions and comments? I guess we're waiting for Ms. Shansky to confirm the date of the last revised plan. Um, but uh in the meantime, okay, it looks like that is the correct date. So are are there any any further comments from commission members? I guess it's the voting five, uh, Joe Chadwick, Fred. I guess it's the voting five, Joe Chadwick, Fred, Joe Vayuso, Marcy, and myself. Any comments from those? And if not, does someone make a motion to approve the two applications, the special exception? I think, do we use the same resolution for both? The special exception, I think we can, and the site plan modification. Is John and McKeel?
Yeah, I think if you look at the findings, I think that addresses both.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve this resolution as our decisions for items number two and three in our agenda? Again, it's both a special exception approved residential development with mixed use and the site plan modifications and coastal site plan, the special exception modification, the site plan modification. So does someone want to move that we adopt the findings and conditions as revised as our, as our decision with respect to those?
Fred Russo, so moved.
So moved by Fred. Is there a second?
Chadwick seconds.
Seconded by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? Those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And the chair is also in favor, so those applications are approved. Thank you, Ms. Shansky. And so we can go on with our agenda here under old business. There's two items under old business, and those are both scheduled for public hearing in our next meeting on May 15th. Looks like a special exception for a special, for an accessory apartment as well as a 6.8 grading application. Under new business, looks like items that have come in, these are, that we will, looks like need to set public hearings for, a number, there's an IHOD map amendment, and that's item number one. And that, it's actually, item one and two are in a special exception, that's at 642 Main Street. And then we've got a couple, looks like a 6.8 application for Seventh Avenue, and then another 6.8, two more 6.8 applications. So we'll schedule those for public hearings coming up probably in June. I don't, but we'll work with, I don't know, McKeel, if that sounds right, or, yeah.
Yeah, June 5th, meaning that we'd like them on the agenda.
Okay, excellent. Okay, with that, then we'll move on to minutes. Minutes of our April, it says minutes 4:24. That's actually, yes, that was our last meeting a week ago. I think they were sent out. I don't know if people had a chance to review those, and if so, does someone want to make appropriate motion?
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Fred makes a motion to approve the minutes of our April 24th meetings, they're second.
Chadwick seconds.
Seconds by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe V in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And the chair is also in favor. Correspondence, any correspondence?
Yes, there is one correspondence from Robinson Cole, representing Cello Partnership or DBA Wireless, is about cell phone towers, just notification that there's an application for modification within Branford, but also many other locations around the state. Happy to share that if anyone on the commission wants to see it.
Thank you, McKeel. Moving then on to other business, we have planners report. McKeel, what do you got for us?
Yeah, sort of, two things really quickly. Since I've started here, I've been starting to pull together and looking at what, the work that the Plan Zoning Commission has undertaken, especially over the past five years, sort of reviewing numbers of applications, what type of applications have been submitted, pulling all that together into a sort of a zoning audit that I want to share with the commission, most likely starting in the May 15th meeting. But there's a consultation process I want to undertake between now and then that's going to be the form of a Microsoft forms survey or questionnaire that I want to share with the commission. I also want to make sure that the commission's aware that I would like to also share this questionnaire with other people in the process, such as staff here in Town Hall and then other possible stakeholders, if appropriate. So I just want to alert you that I'll be sending out that questionnaire right after this meeting, so when you see it, I'm happy to answer any questions if in advance. But I also want to just get your sort of okay on sharing this type of questionnaire. It's very high level. It doesn't get too in the weeds, but it does try to give me some sense of where there might be avenues that we need to discuss. Not really looking at prioritization. There is a ranking function in this question, but it's not to say something is more important or less important, but more to understand what is top of mind and what might require conversation with the commission going down the road. I don't know if there's any questions about that approach before I send it out. And more specifically, is there comfort or discomfort with me sharing that with anyone outside of the commission and City Hall? I know you guys haven't seen it. I won't put you on the spot today, but after you see it, if you could email me about if there's someone you think this would really be good to get their point of view on, I would like to know that. So, but I can communicate that further by email. I just wanted to make sure you're aware that's coming, and this is sort of the approach I'm taking. I think the consultation will help round out the numbers that I've pulled together so I can give you not just a report of sort of a status and an audit, but could help frame what possible avenues, the planning work that the commission might need to undertake. So that's my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, McKeel. McKeel did send me the, a draft of what he was proposing this afternoon. I spent all of like 20 seconds looking at it, and it looked fine. I mean, it looks like you're gathering data from interested stakeholders, both commission members and local staff people, about what works, what we may need to work on, all that, all that's great stuff. I mean, that's what, that was my impression, anyway, but I didn't go through a whole lot in detail. But, so if you do have any comments, let them know, but, you know, it sounds like a good way, if I was starting a job, that's probably a good way to do it.
I will send it out either after this meeting or early tomorrow, so expect that in your email box.
Great. Thank you, McKeel. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
That's it, great. John, anything?
No, nothing, nothing relevant. I continue to enjoy serving in the transition. Jane and I have met with several applicants on Monday, and these are all going to be resulting in future, future applications for you guys to be considering over the next couple of months. And then just, you know, again, happy to assist in the transition.
Great. Thank you, John. Anyone else have anything? If not, then someone will make a motion to adjourn.
Fred Russo makes that motion.
Motion adjourned by Fred. Is there a second?
Chadwick once again, seconds.
Seconded by old faithful Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And the chair is also in favor, so we are adjourned. So thank you, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.